Called to order the regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. This is Monday, December 15th, 2014, 7:00 PM. Please be seated. All councilors are present and accounted for, particularly Councilor Phillips and his seatmate, and we're glad you're all here. Let's stand and join them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Item three, rules of order. The council meetings are conducted under the Roberts Rules of Order and additional rules that were adopted at the organizational meeting in November of 2014. At this time, I'm going to request council that we add an item. If you have the updated agenda, it'd be item 14, and that is to go into executive session later in the meeting to discuss the condition acquisition or real use or the use of real or personal property in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6C.
Slow move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. For the record, that motion required six councilors, and it also required an unanimous vote. Both of those were satisfied. Item number four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council. November 7, 2014, special council meeting. November 10, 2014, organizational meeting of council. November 17, 2014, regular council meeting. November 21, 2014, special council meeting, and November 21, 2014, a second special council meeting.
Move approval as presented of all five, Ms. Jim.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Item five, city manager's report. Andrew Beal.
I have a report and a plug. First, the plug is for the library. They're doing a fundraiser. They have a cookbook of all local recipes that they're selling for $10 each. If anybody's interested, they have them at the library, and we have them here at City Hall for sale. They make great swap gifts or just gifts for family, and I bought two. So get them while you can. And then the other is a thank you to the Recreation Commission and those, the volunteers. Their skating rink is up, and it's full of water. They worked with the fire department and others, and we're just waiting for cold weather. But we will have a skating rink at some point this winter. So thank you to all of the Recreation Commissions and the volunteers and the fire department for working with them on a Sunday.
Right. Thank you.
That's it.
Anything else?
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the manager? Item number six, committee reports. Any councilors attended committee meetings since last meeting and ready to report?
I had a Recreation Commission report until the managers took the wind out of the sails.
Oh.[238.12][238.12](Laughter).
But very well said. Yes, I continue to plug Recreation Commission Winter Carnival now that we are going to have a skating rink. We will have something, whether we have snow or not, the first Saturday in February fireworks that evening. Appreciate the support of all the businesses and individual people in town who are getting ready to write checks to us to help finance the fireworks. They've always been very supportive, and there'll be more in the local newspaper and at these meetings on the Winter Carnival as we get closer. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Phillips?
Chairman, I attended the Harbor Commission meeting along with Mr. Moore, and there was some lively discussion about vendors for next year, how many, and anyone that was the, and how many, and how many people were actually interested. Discussions about future changes at the harbor as far as planning into the 15, 20 years out, some discussion upon that. One thing they did hit upon and goes that the bathrooms, I think, are up for some interior renovations soon, and that was discussed, and I think that will proceed maybe this coming year. What else did we discuss, John?
Look, they really have kind of put their focus on really two issues for the immediate future, and that is to try to find a way to increase more parking at the harbor, and we'll be working on that in the next couple of months. And the other one was, we're going to have to really do something quite soon with regards to the gas tank, probably change its location and upgrade it so it meets the newest standards. And there was also some talk that they would like to try to have a double tank and be able to dispense diesel as well as gasoline, at least on a trial basis. If it doesn't pan out, you can always fill both sides with gasoline. And that was about it.
Good. Thank you. Any other committees to report tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, citizen comments. This is the portion of the meeting where we set aside time for citizens to address the council on any issues of concern, questions that you may have, et cetera, et cetera, and will allow you three minutes to state your case. Council doesn't necessarily always respond to the comments right then, but we are here to listen, here to hear what those concerns are. If you have anything to add, feel free to come to the podium. Don't be nervous because we're taping and you're on TV or anything like that.[433.83][433.83](Laughter). Step forward. No takers?
After that intro, who would?[444.12][444.12](Laughter).
All right, item number eight, presentation of awards. And the first is to Kelvin Hodgson.
Not here.
He's not here.
Not here. And the second is to Gilbert Jamison for 30 years of service.[465.33][465.33](Applause). I'd like to read this citation. "The City of Ellsworth proudly presents this certificate of service to Gilbert Jamison in recognition of your 30 years of service as a police officer for the Ellsworth Police Department. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the City of Ellsworth. Presented this 15th day of December, 2014. Congratulations."[506.11][506.11](Applause).
Do you realize how young he was when he started?[518.79][518.79](Laughter).
Someone said 12, but I didn't believe that.
I think I saw 10 posted today.[529.16][529.16](Laughter).
And the next presentation is the presentation of dispatcher of the year award by Police Chief Coleman.
I want to explain a little bit about the award and how it came to be. This is a vote by this person's peers, and I think we all agree that that is one of the most meaningful types of awards that you could get. Several weeks ago, I'd asked for their votes, and I asked them to consider a few criteria. I don't want to read those to you right now. I'd asked them to consider the person's integrity. By that, I mean the person demonstrates proper moral, ethical behavior in decision-making. The person is driven to do the right thing, and the person is trustworthy. I asked that they consider the person's professionalism. That was defined as the person does more than the minimum, is an excellent role model, and is competent at all aspects of the job. Teamwork, the person is good to work with, helps out, and is reliable. Work ethic, the person works hard, is motivated to get better. When on shift, he or she does what they are supposed to do. And lastly, customer service, the person treats the public respectfully and is responsive to their concerns. So I want to read to you some of the testimonial that I got on this year's winner, and I think at this point it's appropriate to announce Terry Lindskau.[635.32][635.32](Applause). These are from your, the words of your coworkers. For dispatcher of the year, I would go with Terry. I've observed her to be polite and respectful with the public and patrol officers. I think she is willing to do her share of picking up the overtime shifts. She's always willing to help me when I ask her to do the administrative part of her shift, like records checks, ATNs and CTNs, which are a procedure that we use for criminal arrests. I nominate Terry. Terry has been with us for three years. She came with no prior dispatch experience. She's worked very hard on her dispatch skills. She has taken direction from people and applied the advice to improve her skills. She is very conscientious and tries to make sure everyone has what they need. I would nominate Terry. She is great with people, never rude, and really does a nice job with getting all the information in our reports. She puts up with all the different officers' attitudes.[702.63][702.63](Laughter). And I don't think I've ever heard her say anything negative about them. On time for work or earlier, seeks out training to better herself, works a lot of extra shifts, is always friendly with the public, does her assigned extra duties, and helps others with all of theirs. You don't hear her complain about leaving or having to work extra or over her regularly scheduled shifts. She is polite with the public. When dealing with them on the phone, she gets along great with all the officers, and she works hard at getting things put in the right way. If something isn't done right, then she'll go back and fix it or do what it will take to make it right. She's also, as it was stated, she's been with us for three years. She also received this award in 2013, so you're doing a great job. She donates her time to the Tip of Cop event every year and has participated in the Special Olympics fundraising by making scarves. So without further ado, before we present the award, why don't you introduce your family members?
Sure. I have my significant other, Chuck Pratt, and my father, John Parker, Sr., my son, Colin Scott, and his wonderful girlfriend, Lacy.[781.13][781.13](Applause).
Terry, I'm glad to hear that you're saving these up and applying.[791.13][791.13](Laughter). Good to hear. "The Ellsworth Police Department proudly presents this certificate to Terry Lindskau in recognition of being selected as dispatcher of the year 2014 after having been identified by your peers as an exemplary dispatcher worthy of special recognition for your unquestionable integrity, your consummate professionalism, team-oriented spirit, strong work ethic, and exceptional service to the community. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the Ellsworth Police Department and the community at large has contributed to our citizens' quality of life and Ellsworth's quality of place. Presented this 15th day of December, 2014. Signed, Christopher Coleman, Chief of Police, Ellsworth Police Department."[837.13][837.13](Applause).
The next award is to present the Officer of the Year 2014. The same criteria we used, and I might as well just get it over with. Officer Chad Wilmot, would you please come forward?[873.01][873.01](Applause). Chad was hired in August 2001, and he was recognized for his excellent work ethic by being selected as Officer of the Year in 2002 and again in 2009. Chad has been trained and certified as a crash reconstructionist for several years and has provided this service to the region on several occasions this year. He also serves on the Board of Directors for Law Enforcement Program at HCTC and is very active at the school. As I did with Terry, which I didn't get to, I tried to find a couple of words that describe each one of them, and I've only known Chad for a few months. But it's clear to me that he's a warrior and he's tenacious. Now, in the law enforcement world, being a warrior means that you possess certain skills. We call it the warrior spirit. And we put ourselves in harm's way, so a warrior for law enforcement means that certainly those in law enforcement put themselves in harm's way and experienced their own form of battle. And you can be considered a warrior if you completely commit yourself, mind, body, and soul. In order to do that, a warrior must make daily sacrifices of his or own cause. The sacrifices include developing a set of attitudes that will reign above all others. Chad does that. He's committed body and soul to this profession. He's also tenacious. In some of the testimonials I'm about to read, you'll hear about his tenacity. He solved some really big cases this year. So what's tenacious?[972.81][972.81](Laughter). Tenacious is defined as not readily relinquishing a position, a principle, a course of action. He's determined, strong-willed, and tireless. I've known you a couple of months, and you're all those things.[988.81][988.81](Laughter). As far as statistics go, he's charged 222 people with criminal or traffic offenses since January 1st of 2014. Those included 16 bail violations, three probation violations, seven OUIs, 19 thefts, four burglary convictions, five criminal trespass. He's arrested two people for robbery, 11 illegal possession of narcotics, and he summons at least 85 motors for traffic citations. In all, last year, he covered 663 complaints. The average for police officers in Ellsworth, so it's about 503. So again, he's a warrior and he's tenacious. He's resolved a very large burglary ring on the Bogley Brook Road this year. He solved a Shore Road armed home invasion, and he's also solved a burglary on the Bangor Road. So now for the most powerful words, those from your compatriots. For Officer of the Year, I would say Chad. Chad takes his cases very serious and is willing to do the required amount of work and beyond on his cases. He is always willing to help with others tasked when asked. I just want to mention, I've been around criminal investigations all my life, and the most important ingredient to solving these cases is your desire to solve them. It's not technology or clues, it's your tenacity, so that's why he's successful. Chad is a dedicated employee who works hard and has donated countless hours to assist his fellow employees with union issues. Officer Wilmot has done an upstanding job recently with several criminal investigations and is always willing to chip in and help others with whatever is needed. He continues to donate his time to assist the law enforcement program at HCTC and rarely never misses work. I would like to nominate Officer Wilmot for this award. Chad is always going above and beyond the call of duty. He devotes a lot of his time to the department and strives to make his cases instead of waiting for the cases to come to him. Chad is very thorough with his investigations and has made several good cases this year because of it. He juggles the added responsibilities of being a union representative. I think that he has represented the department well during the contract negotiations and has supported and represented other officers with, well with union issues. He always works hard, he's a good investigator, and he was described as a hard charger. So it's my pleasure to introduce the Officer of the Year 2014, Chad Wilmot.[1141.23][1141.23](Applause). I'd like you to let everyone know who's here on your end.
"The Ellsworth Police Department proudly presents this certificate to Chad Wilmot in recognition of being selected as Officer of the Year 2014 after having been identified by your peers as an exemplary police officer worthy of special recognition for your unquestionable integrity, consummate professionalism, team-oriented spirit, strong work ethic, and exceptional service to the community. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the Ellsworth Police Department and to the community at large has contributed to our citizens' quality of life and Ellsworth's quality of place. Presented this 15th day of December, 2014. Signed, Christopher Coleman, Chief of Police, Ellsworth Police Department."[1211.41][1211.41](Applause). I'd like to add that these folks that have been recipients tonight of these awards are an example of the kind of police department and the kind of first responders and the kind of protective agencies that we have in the city, and we are proud to call them our officers. So for you that have received the awards, for all the officers, the leadership of the department, we want to say a heartfelt thank you for all that you do because you do it on our behalf. And I open the meeting for any other counselor that would like to add a comment.
I would agree 100% with you. Not only just the police department, I think our entire staff in the City of Ellsworth are talking on it, but kudos to the police tonight to unite.
That's right.[1286.23][1286.23](Applause). And all of you that are here to support those that were award winners tonight, we thank you for coming and being part of a special night. We're going to move on to item number nine, unfinished business. And item number nine is a public hearing in action on amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 59, consumer fireworks and commercial outdoor public fireworks, pyrotechnics display ordinance. This is table from November 17, 2014, regular council meeting, at which time the public hearing was held. So we've already had the public hearing, we're not going into a public hearing tonight. If someone from the citizens, some of the citizens want to speak to a certain issue that may be brought up here, we can consider opening the floor for just a few minutes, but at this point, it'll be council discussion. So council, first, I think we need to hear sort of summary, if you will, of what the folks that have been working on this have come up with and what's before us tonight. So, Andrew Beal?
Sure. So tonight, we're presenting to you three changes. These were the changes that were discussed at the last council meeting, and you had asked staff to provide wording for you. The first change is in 5.5, which, section 5.5 has to do with the prohibited and restricted uses, and it was just a clarification of talking about the 9:00 AM to 12:30 AM. It was a clarification that 12:30 AM meant the next, the following day, and those were July 4th and December 31st. The other change, in the original proposal that you had received from us, we had talked about using the state's timeline from the Sunday before to the Sunday after the holiday of July 4th and July 31st, January, December 31st, excuse me. It was brought to our attention by Chief Coleman that we were actually being less restrictive than state statute, and that is not allowed. So what we are proposing tonight is to have the same timeline of the Sunday before to actually the Thursday, because Friday and Saturday are only allowed, to use the 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM timeline that is allowed at the other Fridays and Saturdays. So that would allow more usage around the holidays, but wouldn't be less restrictive than the state law. The next item is 5.6. This was a question of interpretation and a clarification. The question would be renters that are on the lakes or anywhere else in the city that would be allowed to usage. We had applied permission from the property owner. There's, there was a legal discussion about whether a renter is a property owner while they are renting the property and they've signed a contract. This just clarifies that and says that renting the property, they would need to have the owner's permission from the people that they were renting from in order to be able to use the fireworks. And then the last, the changing in 7.1B, that in the document that you had received, we had required that there be an actual permit from the Fire Marshal's Office for commercial fireworks 10 days in advance. We had discussed at the meeting, but this is the wording, to change that to the application because there's a question on whether or not anyone would be able to get an actual permit 10 days before an event. There have been known to be times that they get them the day of the event, so that was just another clarification. Furthermore, from the last meeting, you had asked that the city advertised that we were still accepting comments, so we put it on Facebook, we put it on, out on the city's website, and the Ellsworth American did an article, I think Star 97 had a couple of items on their news saying that the city was still looking for comment. I think you received 13 comments, and for the first time, we had pros and cons of fireworks. So those were all forwarded to you and on your email, so you'd receive those through the month. We did not and are not offering proposals on that. We were actually, if you would like us to do something more, but we were waiting for direction from the council on that discussion, discussion of those emails. That's everything.
Counsel?
There's going to be discussion on this one?
Mm-hmm.
The one thing that I would like to bring up is the, is that we have a further discussion that would affect people who live on these roads that would prohibit them from using any fireworks anytime. There are several people who have very large tracts of land, and I, my feeling is that we could have more discussion on perhaps having some, by permit, an opportunity to use fireworks away from the highway or the road they're on, or maybe through the police department, the City Hall, or the fire department or something like that. But at least leave the possibility open in the future for allowing these people to have a chance to use the fireworks on the special occasions like the New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, and so forth. I don't have any specific proposal.
Anyone like to weigh in on that? Or on any other aspect of it, Counsel Blanchett?
Mr. Chairman, it's somewhat in conjunction with the way that Counselor Moore feels. I'd like to make mine a little more, you know, specific or pointed. The proposal calls for a complete ban on them within the urban core, which, in my view, is too restrictive at July 4th. I understand the points of everybody that are being bothered by neighbors that are using a lot of them. It jumps them, it jumps their animals, it messes up their sleep cycles, so on and so forth. But the period around July 4th or on July 4th, I think should be pregame for everybody. It kinds of, I mean, it kind of brings every, everybody, well, should we say, gets their way then.
So you're saying in the urban compact?
Yes.
Within the?
Yes.
Or outside?
I could probably be convinced to support that if we can narrow it up to like two or three days. I don't think, I don't think in the urban compact, we should allow the weekend before and the weekend after and Fourth of July until 12:30 AM. I think we could narrow it up to one or two days that are delineated in the law and But I, I think the weekend before and the weekend after is a little bit much in the urban core.
It seems to me to be a bit contrary to the rationale for limiting them in the urban core in the first place, to open it up around the Fourth of July. So if you're saying we don't want them in the urban core because they're disruptive or they're too close to one another, sort of contradictory to then say, except on this one occasion, it's not too close. Like, that seems to contradict itself to me. So I think if we're saying it's too close to neighbors and too disruptive in the urban core, then I think it's disruptive across the board all the time. That's my feeling, one way or the other.
Good point. Counselor Beetham?
To add to that, in the urban core, we have a lot of areas where the density is that you may have houses on a quarter acre lots and things like this. And if you're shooting off aerial fireworks, that means the fall has got to be on your neighbor, and there's no alternative. You can't keep them on a quarter acre lot. So some of the reasoning for limiting the aerial fireworks or fireworks in general, because it can't be just, just aerial fireworks, was to eliminate the possibility of damage to other, other properties and have a fall on, on your neighbor's property. So the density is, is a thing that we're dealing with there. As far as on the outskirts, if you could prove that you had a minimum size lot that was adequate, I might consider that as far as on the else. But other than that, I would feel that if you do a special occasion or a permit or anything else, you're going to have to write the criteria for that. Is it for birthdays, anniversaries? What is it going to be for? Is it going to be for because somebody came home from school or, I mean, so you have to have the criteria. You have to be able to say when, how much, and, so I think that's, would be rather extensive. I don't think we can do that today, but if, if, if somebody wants to write the criteria for a permit, I'd be willing to look at it, but it's, it's not something I think we want to do tonight.
And Counselor Beetham, I think besides rewriting criteria, we'd have to redraw the map. Because if you're going to take certain lot sizes and say, well, it would be allowed there on a certain occasion, or even if it was just on the Fourth of July, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting to see who falls within that category and who doesn't. They could still be, and we know there are some that are in the urban core. They're, they're within the, within that map as it's presented now. Counsel, authority?
May I suggest that we've got time. We can pass this tonight and instruct staff to come back prior to July 4th, because that's what I think we're talking about is the Fourth of July. I'm not talking about birthdays and, and all the parties and everything. It's just the birth of our nation that I'm keying on. We have six months to come back with some ideas, or we can come up with some ideas and then run it by staff. So I'd be supportive of, as is written tonight, with the understanding that over the next six months, we as a group get together and come up with some, some plans with the committee that would allow us to open up for a finite amount of nights surrounding the Fourth.
And I, I would add that I strongly agree with Counselor Beetham that absolutely people who live on small lots need to be protected from having the debris land on their property.
I bring to light that, how many times a year do we allow 100 fire trucks and 75 tractor trailers to a high-speed run down through Main Street? We did it once. Maybe we can give them one day to fire off fireworks.
Counselor Phillips?
Yep. John, John's concept about larger lots having the ability to do it, I think is not a bad idea. But enforceability and making it clear for the police department how to do that is, is an issue which I, we need to address before we move that way. The concept I like, how to make it work, I don't understand, because it's a set session. And Pam is, is pretty much right. In the urban core, you know, that's what we're looking for, and allowing it for one day, you've still got the neighbor that maybe is not neighborly, that's not taking care of himself on that posted stamp lot, letting it fall on the other one's house, but that's a little more difficult to allow.
Good comments. I welcome the motion if anybody's ready.
Do you want to ask, do you want to ask if there's any?
Well, first, I'd like to ask anybody that's served on the committee, do you have any further comments or the direction we're moving seems to be to accept what's before us tonight with the changes that, that have been made and then continue to tweak it if necessary, but keep an active process going. But are we missing anything here in this discussion or are we having on track? Either the Chiefs or anyone else who's been on the...
I just, I'm thankful for your comment about the lot size. I think if the concept is adopted, we need to work on some sort of process so that we can ensure enforceability. That was my own comment, and I appreciate your comment.
And that's true. I mean, you're, you're the one out there and you're sending one of the officers out and then you know it's going to be a confrontational and, you know, we don't, we're not, I don't think we're any good sitting here trying to make your job more difficult. One of the officers is doing our job.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Anyone else like to make a comment? I'll open it up to you. All right, council. It's your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the amendments to the City of Ellsworth Code of Ordinances, Chapter 59, consumer fireworks and commercial outdoor public fireworks, pyrotechnics, display ordinance, as presented this evening with the three changes delineated by the city manager.
Moved by Counselor Forde, or seconded by Counselor Moore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried unanimously.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your vote?
Against.
Okay, I'm sorry. My apology. 6-1. Counselor Blanchett voting in the negative. Sorry, I didn't catch it. Item number 10, public hearing in action on application for new and/or renewal of the following licenses, and we have a number of them tonight. First is Finelli's of Maine Incorporated, 12 Down East Highway, renewal of a city class C license, victueller liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant liquor license, malt and minus. First off, any comments from council and from staff?
No, no issues at all with any of these applicants?
None on any of them. Okay, good. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone like to speak to this application? Don't hear anybody. Public hearing closed. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of Finelli's of Maine Incorporated for renewal of their license.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Next is Gary Reynolds, doing business as Little G's, 406 State Street, for a new city class B license, victueller liquor and amusement, and a new state restaurant, class three and class four malt and minus liquor license. This is a new license. Anyone here representing, could you state your name for the record?
Gary Reynolds.
Gary, welcome. Glad to have you here tonight.
Do I need to get in front of the podium, or can you hear me fine?
I can hear you fine.
Okay.
Are you, are you going to speak to us?
Nope.
Nope. If so, we wanted you to go to the podium.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary. Public hearing is open. Any comments on this application? Public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Gary Reynolds' request for a license with a caveat, as long as his food is good as Big G's.
Oh.
And I'll, I'll strike that from the motion. Move and approve. They have a wicked deli.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Next is...
...the Ellsworth Business Community.
Ellsworth C.I.L.L.C., doing business as Ellsworth Comfort Inn, 130 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. Public hearing is open. Any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of the Ellsworth Comfort Inn renewal of license.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous?
Jacket, jacket.
Jacket.
Thank you for coming. Next license is Adelbert Gaspar, doing business as Eastward Bowling Lanes, 25 Eastward Lane, Suite 6, for renewal of a city class B license, victueller liquor and arcade, and renewal of a state restaurant, class three and class four malt and minus liquor license. Public hearing is open. Any comments on Eastward Bowling Lanes license? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is this one of those places where a church is moved in next to a licensed liquor establishment in a commercial zone so that it's not prohibited? That was one of the changes we made. Because there is a new church right beside this, in the other suite.
But I think it's like, it's a chicken and an egg thing.
Yeah, yeah.
If a church moves in next to an already licensed facility, you don't close it down.
I just brought that up for public consumption, that that's why it was allowed.
Good point. Any other questions? Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the renewal of licenses for Eastward Bowling Lanes.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Next license is Troy A. Adams, doing business as Jasper's Restaurant and Motel, 200 High Street, for renewal of a city class A license, victueller liquor amusement and lodging, and renewal of a state class A restaurant, class A malt, spirituous, and minus liquor license. Public hearing is open. Any question or comments on this application? Public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Troy Adams, doing business as Jasper's Restaurant, for renewal of their license.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And the last one is Jeff and Diane Kelly Locos, doing business as 86 This, 125 Main Street, for a new city class C license, victueller liquor, and a new state restaurant, class three and class four malt and minus liquor license. This being a new license, anyone here representing?
86 This. Right here.
State your name for the record.
Jeffrey Kelly Locos.
Public hearing is open. Any question or any comments on this application? Public hearing is closed. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of 86 This.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Perks Band.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Perks Band.
Congratulations on your new location.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Item 11, presentation by the police chief on the new mission statement and core values of the Ellsworth Police Department. Chief Coleman?
Good luck. Thank you. Thanks again for allowing me some time to present what I think is an important document. The purpose of this presentation is to get your, to make you aware of what we've been doing at the police department, but also to provide the council an opportunity for I think I should start with, for those that may not know what a mission statement is and a statement of values and core values. I believe a mission statement is one of the most important declarations that any agency can produce. It defines your purpose, it defines how you're going to go about your business and what your overall, it points to your overall effectiveness. Without a proper mission statement, things can get convoluted and you can lose sight of why you're really there. In the field of law enforcement, it's also very important to have guiding principles or core values that an agency identifies and requires each member to use when making decisions or when faced with those moral and ethical decisions or dilemmas. The process that we used to get here tonight started on October 3rd, when I took, took over as your police chief. I met with each individual member of the, of the department over a series of weeks. That discussion was private, but it had many purposes. One of the purposes was to, to get from them their thoughts about why they're in law enforcement, what the Ellsworth Police Department was there to do, and what they use to guide their decisions. So I really got individual conversations with each member and tried to summarize their collective thoughts in the document that you have. After the first, a few weeks ago, I came up with a draft and I put it back out for revisions, and I knew that there was a level of engagement that I wanted in the department because I got a lot of responses back to that draft. They were engaged, they were helping me tweak the words, which is something that is needed for it to be anything other than a plaque on the wall. A mission requires commitment and a belief that it is important. It has to be something that you truly believe in with your heart and soul. It's not something that is just written down. You have to actually believe and commit to it, and it requires a level of devotion that you often don't see in society anymore. So I'm here today representing the members of the department, and I, I believe that the document that you have contains the, the words that it should. So without further ado, let me read it to you. Our mission is to provide the highest quality police services to our community and to protect the rights of all guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Maine, and the ordinance of the City of Ellsworth. We are dedicated to maintaining a safe community by reducing crime and fear of crime and protecting life and property. We will work in partnership with our community to solve problems and enhance the quality of life in our city. To me, there's no more a noble of a calling than serving your public, serving the people. And that short paragraph has a lot of different things in it. I want to highlight a few things. The first sentence says, provide the highest quality police services. We can't stop learning because the world keeps changing. We have to constantly try to get better. We have to constantly challenge ourselves and each other so that we can stay safe in the world that's changing so quickly before our eyes. We also have to stay in partnership with the community. Public trust is something that takes a lifetime to gain, but you can lose it in an instant. If we abide by what's written in that paragraph, we will never lose it. The next paragraph is called the statement of values. It says, we, the Ellsworth Police Department, have dedicated ourselves to public service. By choosing a career in law enforcement, we recognize the community holds us to the highest standards of conduct. We will preserve public trust through our commitment to the following values. Integrity. Our community has entrusted us with a tremendous authority and expects that we will do what is right in matters of personal and professional integrity. We will adhere to the moral and ethical standards of our profession and maintain, maintain the public trust at all times. We recognize and respect all people as individuals, and will hold ourselves to the highest standards... We recognize and respect all people as individuals, and will hold ourselves to the highest standards and the law enforcement code of ethics. At this particular stage in our history, that paragraph says it all. We have to maintain the trust of the public. The second we lose that, we're in trouble. And I believe at Ellsworth, we have it, and we have to work hard to keep it. The next core value is professionalism. It says, "We are committed to maintaining an environment that promotes and encourages continued professional development through quality recruitment, education, and training. We will seek continuous improvement in everything we do, and will continue to utilize the most current techniques, equipment, and best practices of our chosen profession." Again, we can't stop. We have to keep learning and keep progressing and keep getting better. And lastly, community service. We will strive to meet the challenge of protecting our citizens, and will be responsive to their needs, the needs of our community. We recognize that to be an effective law enforcement agency, we must be flexible to the needs of our community. We will welcome and seek feedback in an active partnership with the community in carrying out our responsibilities. We will show compassion and respect to all those we deal with. My job as your chief is to make sure this just isn't hanging on the wall, that it's lived every day, and so far, and I gotta point out, I'm very touched by the presence here today, they are committed to this profession, and it's been an honor to lead them at this point. And I think that this won't just be hanging on the wall. I think it's something that's gonna guide our actions in the future. Any questions?
Incredible document.
We want to, again, I want to thank you for the effort that you've put into this. There's nothing like starting off well. Ending well is nice, too, but you're not probably gonna end well if you don't start well. And you've really taken, you and the department, your lieutenant, your officers, your leadership, everyone that has had a hand in this. And you have the respect, you have the trust of this community. I believe, I agree with you. I concur wholeheartedly, and I believe it will only grow as you, as you work on the mission statement. And most mission statements are live, living documents, and they're growing. And as you say, change with the changing world, and it's a breath of fresh air. And just as a little side note, kind of personal, we're doing the very same thing at the council level, defining core values and vision statements and our mission, and we feel that, you know, when the council gets that established, it's a help for every department, certainly the department heads and everyone throughout the staff of the city. So again, we appreciate the efforts, and we appreciate the department. Thank you, Chief.
We know where we can go now. If we need a consultant to help us.
We're close to that now.
I did want to point out, there are three hanging in the police department. The first one is gonna be hanging in the lobby as a reminder for the citizens to see. The second one is hanging in the squad room for the officers to see, and the third one's right outside my office. And as long as I'm chief, they'll be hanging there unless we make modifications of the mission statement together, so.
I think he could probably teach you how to use that, too.
I'm afraid to. It'll take a bigger entity to do that.
Thank you, Chief. Andrew Beal.
And if I may?
You may.
You know, we have one of the best, or the best, in my opinion, police departments, you know, in the state. And I have to say, it's really great to see everybody here and to see that these awards tonight being brought to the public and letting the public know. We have, you know, the second largest or the second most liked Facebook page in the country for our department our size. I think we have over 10,000 likes. We only have 8,000 people in the City of Ellsworth, but, which just proves that, you know, they're noted not just within the city, but in the entire region also. And thank you to our leadership in the, in the police department for bringing this out and letting the public see and the council see how great they are, and they do deserve everything they're receiving tonight and more. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and just a note that earlier you saw a pile of firefighters up here, too.
Yes.
Terry is their dispatcher, too. They were there to honor her as well as the comradeship that has been breaking out all over this city hall with departments now, so.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, thanks again.
Something I'd like to say, too. And in listening to what was said honoring the people who were chosen for the good work that they've done and for people who've put in a lot of years and are celebrating an anniversary of the city, I felt really good about the way it was done this evening, listening to the chief really explain how the decisions were made, how it involved everybody. I thought, I thought it was great.
Very helpful.
The best I've seen. It kind of brought everybody into it. Teamwork.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Chief. And the rest of you, let him come up here and do this.
Item number 12, council order number 121400, request of the tax collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet, which I presume you have, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal claim deed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Don't think we want to hear.
I didn't see her coming up, though.
Go ahead and present, or?
So this is another Kiddy Billings store sold during the last month, and I'm just asking that we accept the payment for that and that we have the city manager do a municipal claim deed to this person.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 13, council order 121401, request of the public works director to accept a proposal for engineering services to reconstruct Beals Avenue. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, as you know, every year we go around, we look at roads and stuff, oh, we gotta have hot stop or reclaim or rebuild. And I was directed to go around and see where we need to start some engineering services to get some roads completely rebuilt. Beals Avenue in the past, for some of you that don't know, that we've probably worked on over half a dozen more water leaks. A lot of them are real costly, because they ran for weeks before we could find them, because they ran in sewer trench and down the storm drain into the river. We never noticed whether they was coming up. We just started searching. We found one by accident one day when the oil truck went up the street and caved down in. We found a leak when it ended up. He was stuck in the hole, so we had to get him out. Half of it's old lead joints, the other half is trench-like pipe. The storm system up there is the old sewer system, and it's on this end of Beals Avenue. On the other end, it goes, does go underneath the track, but a lot of water right now runs across people's property, onto the lawns, in the driveways. We go up every one and try to divert it because of the snow banks, and it flooded the yards and two houses that flooded their basements. One was an elderly lady that ruined all rugs and everything when it backed the driveway. This was one of the roads I decided to have reconstructed and have the engineer work down on it along with city managers, bust into it. And at this time, we'd like to have Hethfield Engineer do our engineering on it, not in design, not go out to bed or anything, but have it ready to go when the road committee decides that this one should be done. Any questions?
Andrew Beal.
And I did, I forgot to add the financing of this project.
Oh.
No, I forgot that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So we would be splitting this, the engineering costs in half. Half would come from the local roads account, and because we're replacing a water main and that design would be part of this, half would come from, and I forgot my sticky note, but I think it's the water department.
Water department.
Capital expenditure account.
The water local area projects.
Water local area projects. I was off. Sorry. So. Fifty-fifty would be.
And I just found that out tonight, too.
I know.
Got my notes.
Questions for the public works director or the manager?
I want to the finance director.
Sure.
That particular count, is that the money left over from like Route 1A?
No.
No.
This was budgeted money that we budget $30,000.
Yeah, $30,000 capital improvement on local projects that we don't plan on. If something comes out, then we can do stuff.
Do you have a timeframe in mind for doing this?
No, I don't know.
And we're talking strictly design?
Strictly, we want to.
Engineering?
It was, I believe, the road committee's decision back long that we try to keep some engineering down on some road, so if we have the money, like next year, if we do have the money, yes, it'd be freed up.
Ready to go.
We have the engineer ready, we could go that because of where our budget falls and everything, so we could get it in that season and not wait a year down the road, like two years or three years.
If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the public works director to accept the proposal from Hethfield Engineering and Design, Inc., for survey design and borings along the road at a proposed fee of $48,800, half of which would come, $44,800?
Yep.
Did I say something different?
Except forty-eight.
A dyslexic. Okay, half the money would come from the local roads account, and half would come from the water department's local area projects, if I heard that correctly.
Yep.
The fee does not include reproduction costs for documents or permit fees which may be required.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Item 14, executive session to discuss the condition, acquisition, or the use of real or personal property in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6C. We will, we know executive session come out to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
That they're going to accept the session.
All in favor?